Okay, welcome everyone to the Admiral School Committee meeting of Monday, April 6, 2010. This is your reminder that this meeting is being electronically recorded. I want to thank everybody for taking part today in this unique new meeting environment that we have today. So, thank you for taking the time. And this is a special meeting of the school committee to hear a report of the superintendent, specifically with regards to the school calendar and even more specifically with regards to upcoming scheduled April vacation. As far as the meeting goes, what I'm going to do is I'm going to turn it over to the administration. When they are done, I will ask them, I will then probably make a few comments myself, then turn it over to to the committee for comments. What, so if you have a comment at that time, if you just raise your hand into the video, I will go in order that you guys pop up on my screen. So, I will get to you if you raise your hand. So with that, thank you again, and I'll turn it over to the superintendent, Mr. Sawyer. You got it unmute?
Excuse me. Thank you Chairman Withers. I really appreciate everybody's willingness to meet tonight for the special meeting. The timing of April vacation and where we are with regards to guidance from the state really, I think, required us to to not wait for our next regularly scheduled meeting. And if nothing else, this gives us a chance to practice this method of doing business so that we'll be veterans by the time we have our next meeting. The administration is requesting that the school committee consider tonight changing the school calendar. Specifically, we are recommending that the district moves the 184th and 80, 185th school days, which currently are scheduled for June 22nd and 23rd. We are recommending that we move those to April 21st to 22nd. That's the Tuesday and Wednesday of what was scheduled to be April break. In terms of the timing, that's two weeks away, April break. And we really felt like we needed to make a decision about this so that we could communicate to families one way or the other. I mean, even if we keep the calendar as it is tonight, that's going to have implications that we're going to need to prepare people for. If we make the change, we need to communicate that. And so, it's really important that we made a decision as quickly as possible so that we can have everybody ready for whichever reality we choose for ourselves. And we were waiting for news from the state. They, you know, told us some guidance would be coming. I was hopeful that it would be a little bit earlier last week, but as you saw, it came, you know, at five o'clock on Friday. And it didn't really say anything that we didn't already know. So, I guess we shouldn't have waited that extra week, but it is helpful that we do have in writing the position of the commissioner, which again, isn't really a new position, but it does clarify that this is a local decision, that you do have the authority to decide what we should do. So, just a couple of points about the mechanics of the school calendar before we get into the value of the change. You know, we, we have 180 school days a year. Our teachers in their contract work 183 days. There are three days that are outside of the 180 school days. Those three days have already been worked this year, right? So, from here to the rest of the year, the teachers' days and the school days correlate one to one, right? When we have school, they have work. And that's, that's needs to match up for pay purposes throughout the rest of the year. So, the calendar by regulation requires us to schedule 185 days of school. And the idea here is that that builds in five, what's imagined as snow days, so that people know not to schedule their vacations too early and, you know, not be available for the end of school. So, we have a calendar that does that, and our 185th day is June 23rd. Now, we had one actual snow day this year, so that moved the last day of school up by one day. And that's exactly what happens, right? So, when we have 180 school days, when we have a snow day, what we're basically doing is we're moving whatever day that we have snow out and replacing it with what is then, you know, the first one's the 181st day, right? So, in the calendar, it's your 181st day, but in reality, if you only have one snow day, it's the 180th day of school. The state just refers to it as the 181st day because you scheduled it as the 181st day, even though it's your only, your 180th day of school. And that's how that works. So, there's this swap out. And the reason for that is that we only pay the teachers and the parents are in the same situation as the teachers in terms of how their contracts work. The rest of the employees are on a different schedule, and so this doesn't really apply to them. But that, that day when we have a snow day, right, they don't work that day. They don't come to work. They're not, there are no expectations for them during that day because it's not considered a workday. That workday gets moved to the end of the calendar. And so, the first four days of the closure, right? So, we, we closed school on March 13th. So, for the 16th, what is the first day of the closure, right? Those first four days in that week, we treated like snow days, right? Because by regulation, we knew we had to make them up. Those were our 182nd, 183rd, 184th, and 185th days. We had no expectations for the educators to do anything. Those were not workdays for them because those days had to be made up by regulation. So, so that we don't have to pay them for extra days, right? We had to say, those aren't workdays and move those to the end of the schedule. So, that's why we're in that range of days 181 to 185. Now, as outlined in the commissioner's guidance on Friday, where we have those 185 days is up to the school committee to decide where those days belong. And under normal circumstances, we would live with what we have. But under the very unusual circumstances that we're living under with everybody being home and school being closed, I think there are real reasons to consider moving those two days into April break. One, I'm not sure the concept of a vacation in the midst of this makes sense to anybody. Nobody can go anywhere. And mostly people are confined to their homes. So, with that, I think many families are hoping to continue to have educational services provided to them during the week because what else are they going to do with that time? From our perspective, the momentum that we're building as we shift to remote learning will be hampered if we take the week off. And then there's just the continuity of learning that'll be interrupted, which, you know, we're just piecing back together as we shift from the original enrichment experiences we were providing to actual remote learning. So, for all of these reasons, we believe that having learning services during that week is what's in everyone's best interest. And we can, we think we can do that with just those last, those two days because one, I think, just practically speaking, it's difficult on families when we end school in the middle of the week. That leaves them with a partial week to deal with. So, by ending on a Friday, that's a cleaner end of the year. And by using those two days, that helps us to end on that, on that Friday, we can use those two days during April break to provide what will be a week's learning experience for families, even though it'll only be two school days from the teacher perspective. But we can do that by modifying the way we're providing that experience internally. There are things we can do in the two weeks between now and then to plan for all of that so that we can deliver a week's worth of learning with two days of school. We couldn't do that week in and week out, but we can plan to do that for this week. And so, I, from our perspective, this is the best of both worlds. We can maintain what we're doing. We can keep that momentum. We can provide the service through the week for families. And we can get out the 19th. So, from our perspective, this is a win all around. And I will turn it back to the committee for questions.
Thank you Superintendent Sawyer. Thank you for the thought that the administration has put into it. You know, I think it does make sense after the first, you know, kind of shock of hearing, you know, that April vacation will be impacted, then you realize that there really is no April vacation this year to be had for families. And as we transition into this remote learning environment and more of a learning rather than enrichment environment, I think it makes sense to continue the train moving. So, you know, I do, do think it makes sense after giving it some thought. But that said, I'll turn it over to the committee. So, if any committee members have any comments or questions, please let me know and I will go around. Mr. Storrs?
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Sawyer. Can you provide us some understanding of the remote learning that has been happening? Is it consistent across the district from school to school, grade to grade, et cetera?
The short of the guess has been quite a bit of planning. We're operating from a learning plan for the district as a whole that built around templates that everybody's working off of. But that being said, you know, we are at our best when we provide educators the freedom to, you know, do what they know is best for the kids that they serve. And so, within that, there is some freedom. So, I won't say that there's no variation, but there's quite a bit of consistency, I think. Shifting into this week, I think the, just to remind us all, when we left on the 13th, we were, it was a bit of a scramble and we sent home enrichment, you know, activities for students to the best of our ability. There was quite a bit of variation there. Now that we've had time to plan and build systems to, you know, work together remotely to provide these learning experiences, I think that parents realize it was a very different experience going into this week. And I know that, you know, more than ever, we have teachers collaborating together to ensure not only that those experiences are equitable across, you know, classrooms within schools and across schools, but also, you know, they're working together to try to figure this out. Because to be very clear, this is a situation in which while we're all professional educators, none of us are trained to provide an education in this environment. And so, there's, there's a lot of this that we have to figure out together. I'd like to pause here and let Mr. Regan just chime in with maybe some of her own thoughts on that particular question.
Yeah, so, all of the templates were created with having the same components. So, we wanted to make sure that there was a target or a focus area for each content area, that there was an option for digital learning, and there was also an option for non-digital learning or traditional paper pencil tasks. Also, this week specifically, we're asking teachers to be able to provide feedback to students and to be able to respond to them and communicate with them on the work that they're submitting and that the instruction that they're having with their teacher. Remote learning in general can look like a variety of things. It can be a virtual learning experience. It could be watching a short video on Khan Academy or any of the other digital resources that are available. But it doesn't look the same across all classrooms and all schools and all buildings.
Jim, does that answer your question?
I believe it does. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else with any questions? Rob? And again, before Rob starts, you know, keep your hands up when asked for questions. I'm just going to scroll through my, my videos here and you show up in different orders each time. So, bear with me. Rob, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you Superintendent Sawyer and Assistant Superintendent Regan for your thoughts. I did have a couple of questions. Have you, what conversations have you had with the AEA? How, how are these options communicated to them? Did they have any questions or concerns? Well, I guess we'll, we'll start there.
So, the, yes, we had a meeting with the AEA this morning. We had reached out to them when we reached out to the committee and let them know that this was something that we were interested in. They did some internal communication with their members to get a sense of where things stand. And they report to us that there is an overwhelmingly positive reaction to this, to this proposal. So, we do have to work out some of the details with them in terms of how to make this work. But in terms of the concept of moving the days, there's a high level of support for that.
Thank you. And was there a particular reason why, why Tuesday and Wednesday were chosen as opposed to Wednesday, Thursday, or?
So, the reality is, is that because it doesn't matter where the two days are. That's really for paper. The, the teachers are going to have the flexibility to pick how they want to set up their week with their students in a way that makes the most sense for them. They're going to give us two days worth of work. That work is going to be entirely dedicated to students. All the administrative stuff that we usually take up a significant portion of their day, we are not using during that week. And that's how we're getting through with only two days.
Okay. And then the other two questions came up as you were giving your report. You mentioned the first four days where some, some worksheets were sent home. Those really counted as, as snow days, but I know a lot of parents use those days for homeschooling purposes based on the work that was sent home. So, those days technically aren't counting, or they are towards the, towards the 185?
They count towards the 185.
Theoretical.
Towards the 180.
Okay.
They've had to be made up in accordance with the regulations that the commissioner has provided us.
Okay, alright. And then, my last question for now, I have a question off topic from this for later on, but the foods and lunches during the April break, I just want to confirm, these would only be available during the two days?
No, all week long.
All week long, including the Monday?
Yep.
Which is technically the holiday that we won't be celebrating, but?
Just like this Friday is a holiday, we're providing lunch on Friday as well.
Even better. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hill?
Hi, thanks. First, this, the teachers' work I've seen so far has been amazing. So, I think teachers are doing a great job. I just wanted some clarity and to put this into context in terms of all of the work that's being done remotely is essentially review and enrichment. It is not graded assignments, right? What do we, can someone put that context to you like, true or false? Is it, does it count towards your grade?
So, that, that's a thorny issue that we are still need to do, do some work on. We wanted to first get us up and running and working and then work out some of the trickier details. The short answer is, is that we're going to have a slightly different answer to that question by level. What we have to do with high school students is pretty different than what we would have to do with, say, elementary students and, you know, it goes without saying that middle school is somewhere in the middle. So, the bottom line here is, is that we want to, and this is all in accordance with the guidelines that the commissioner sent out that we shared with you. I'm losing track of time now, but, you know, over a week ago. You know, as much as possible, we want to provide meaningful feedback to students on the work that they're doing so that they can assess their own progress and make improvements, right? We want this to be, you know, not just, you know, fun stuff to do, but actual meaningful learning activities. And to do that, you have to push kids. And for that to happen, they have to get good feedback on their performance. That doesn't necessarily mean that we have to grade them. And at this point, you know, everyone's operating on the assumption that while we are closed, this portion is just, you're basically being given credit for participating. And the people that are doing that work will be credited for that. And people that aren't, are not going to be punished for that because there are all kinds of concerns around equity that we have students in this community that for various reasons don't have the same ability to do what we're asking to do as others. So, they should not be punished by that. So, if we have a short closure, I don't think it'll be that hard to put what we did while we were away sort of in a box in a way that is beneficial to the people who did it, but doesn't necessarily, you know, isn't necessarily translated into a grade. And then certainly we want to not have it be punitive for people who could, were unable to do it or even chose not to, although, you know, it's hard to tell which is which. The real problem on this one becomes if we don't make it back to school this year. And I should just mention that the state, I think, has indicated pretty consistently that they are, you know, really dedicated to going back if possible. There are a lot of reasons why I think they would like to see that happen. But I think we all know that there are real reasons to fear that that won't happen. And I think we have a little bit of time between now and that determination to, to think this through and then make some decisions about what we're going to do. Because if we're not, if we don't ever make it back, then I think we have harder choices to make about what to do about grades. And, you know, the, basically, we're talking about the student record at this point. Then if we do go back on May 4th, then I think there's a way to sort of package what we've been doing in a neat way that doesn't really have as much of an impact. So, I know that's a long way to say, I don't know, but we were, I mean, I was in meetings today about this. So, this is, this is a real sensitive issue for us that we're trying to figure out where we want to stay ground because there's no right, there's no right answer from our perspective. There's, it's really about choosing which outcome we think is going to be fairest to the greatest number of people.
Thank you.
Jim?
Thank you. Mr. Sawyer, I know like with my son's college right now, they've kind of gone to a thing where they're just going to do pass fail for grading. I know we're not there yet, but has there been any thought about a pass fail? And is that something that's in our capability?
It has been talked about, and I think there's a real chance that some portion of what we're going to do is going to be that route. Yes, we have that capability and that is a significant portion of the conversation, especially at the high school level. You know, K8, it's, it's, it's a different conversation.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Scott?
Thanks. First and foremost, I just want to say, I mean, what, what's, there's really three groups here that are, they're doing a lot of extraordinary things. A lot of credit to our teachers for being able to mobilize and basically distance learn on the fly. I do think a lot of good is going to come from this in terms of future planning and curriculum and just showing what we're capable of doing. Obviously, the students, the kids are just resilient. I have three at home, so we see the, the ups and downs of distance learning quite a bit. And it's, you know, it's challenging. Which brings me to my third group, and that's the parents who probably had, well, it's almost hard to say. Not that everybody had a lot of preparation time here. We really didn't. But probably the least prepared were, were parents. Were trying, many of them working remotely at the same time, trying to homeschool and have some semblance of a schedule and some loose structure around, around the kids. So, my question, coming from all this, since brevity is not a strong suit for me, has there been discussion with parents about April break? And the reason I bring that up is that I have had a lot of parents come to me. I've seen a lot of stuff online, but a lot of folks directly to me, they are fried. So, if nothing else, you know, they probably could use the break of not having to try to, you know, some kids are better than others at, you know, picking up distance learning and just going. I am curious as to whether or not there was consideration. I know the AEA has been discussed and, you know, all the reasons that you brought up today for, for your proposal, I fully get. But I would be remiss if we didn't, you know, at least ask about considerations for the, for the parents, whether or not that break, whether you go anywhere or not, would be good for them.
So, there was absolutely parent consideration in the, the, the recommendation. No, there's, there's no easy way to gauge what parents think globally. So, I think many of us have our opinions skewed by, you know, the parents that reach out to us. I have to say that from my perspective, most of what I was getting from parents was the opposite of that, that they did not want to face April break without having school to provide some structure to what was going on at home. I'd like to echo what you're saying. You know, I, the four of us are trapped at home and it is a, every day is a struggle, right? And, you know, from dragging my children out of bed and trying to figure out what they're supposed to be doing and, you know, getting them to do it even though they want to go online and play video games with their friends. And, you know, it's, it is a daily struggle. And so, I feel, feel for parents because I'm one and I'm, I am living through this. I'm on the receiving end of everything we're doing. So, I have an acute awareness of what you're talking about. But I haven't, I haven't personally been getting much message on, I need a break from this, although I do appreciate that sentiment. I would love a break from this. I just, I've been getting a lot of people saying, don't, you've got to do something during break because the idea of going through another week without anything to structure around was something, a lot of feedback that I received. That's, that's really the only thing I could add to that.
I know that's a bit of a loaded question because you're going to get a lot of mixed answers. So, I can, I can appreciate that. Again, you know, probably having some middle ground here is about the most equitable solution I think that you could come up with. But, you know, I had a lot of parents asking me about, you know, that consideration. So, I felt it was an obligation to bring that up here at this meeting. So, thank you for, for taking the question.
Yeah, and I would just add that parents should, should feel like they should do what's best for their families. Because as, as we, you know, my answer to, to Mr. Hill's question reveals, we're not going to punish students. We're not going to take action that is, in any way hurts their academic standing over anything that happens during this. Now, you know, anyone paying attention to that and listening carefully will realize that that's, you know, French for, if I don't do anything, nothing's going to happen to me. But, you know, quite frankly, we need to convince kids to do this for the right reasons. And we need to work with families. I know a lot of families want to continue to support their kids' education. So, let's not worry about that. And let's just focus on doing what we can. So, that being said, through any of this, if a family feels like best interest of their children's social emotional well-being is to not do something or do something different or take a different tact or take a break from it, I, I fully support everyone doing what they need to, to get through this. And that's my message to the educators who are really working tirelessly to support our kids under very, very difficult circumstances. Because if teaching wasn't hard enough, doing it while you're also providing, you know, support for your own kids at home, right? That's an impossible task. And I, I just, I really commend our educators for, for trying to persevere through it all. It's hard for all of us. And so, we all just have to, you know, give each other, I think, a lot of latitude and just be patient.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, Scott. Any other questions? If you do, again, just raise your hand up and I will get to you. Shannon?
Shannon, you're unmute?
There he goes. Is that better?
Better.
Okay, great. Thank you. Not so much a, a question as a comment. Just reiterating what Mr. Sawyer just said, something I think that we all need to keep in mind is that this is definitely a new reality for everybody. And as, as we go through, all this is going to become more normal, more, it's going to be easier to, to adjust to this new normal of the online learning. And I think everybody just needs to take a step back and realize we're all learning here. The, the parents were adjusting to our new normal, trying to, you know, sometimes work at home or trying to figure out what's, what our next step is while everybody's in the same house and trying to do different things. Our educators are learning new skills on top of what they already know with, with teaching. And the students are adjusting to their new reality as well. And again, I think every, everything that I've seen so far, so far, I've been really pleased and amazed with the work that everybody is doing and how we're all trying to just roll in and roll up our sleeves and figure this out. So, you know, more, more of a comment there. And a thank you to everybody that has been, has been putting in a lot of hard work to, to make this work the last few weeks.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you, Steve. I, I know it's not really this conversation about remote learning, but one of the things that we do approve through the calendar, so it's related to the calendar, is graduation. I know there's a lot of concern out there for seniors. Has there been any discussion right now about whether or not we might be postponing graduation or what the plan might be based on the situation?
We are beginning to look at what our options are. Honestly, the first step is to see if there are any people who have gotten ahead of us on this and we can steal some good ideas. Again, I think we have a couple of weeks before we get to a place where we really need Again, I think we have a couple of weeks before we get to a place where we really need to start to, to do some active planning. About the situation. So, you know, the best outcome of all would be that we return to school in May, in which case we would have graduation. In some form or another, we'd be able to pull that off if we're back. So the real question is, what happens if we don't come back? And so, you know, then, you know, the questions are around, do we, do, do we postpone graduation until? We can all congregate again? Do we do a virtual graduation? Do we skip the whole thing? These are all things that have to be discussed. And as, you know, the most significant ceremony for the district, we would want to have that conversation with the committee and make that together.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Diane?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just want to say that my daughter's experience has been very well taken. And she's done a good job and I almost feel like she personally could use some more work. Because she just seems to like thrive on this type of environment. And I agree with my co, you know, the other committee members here saying that like the teachers and educators have done a wonderful job. Getting up to par and with all of this happening. But my question really is, has they, have they provided a deadline for when they'll make a determination? In the event that they want to suspend school for a little bit longer?
So the short answer is no, but I think that what we experienced. With this last closure should be indicative, right? Like we were approaching the deadline for returning on April sixth, as had been the original plan. And, you know, more than a week out from that, the governor suddenly and without any warning notified us that we would go out for another month. I think that we'll, we'll experience something similar to that, hopefully a little bit, a little bit more notice that it's coming. But I, I think that as we come out of April break, or what was April break, or maybe it was April break. That last week of April would might be a pretty significant time for them to make a decision. Because from, from Desi's point of view, I think they understand that once we start to get into May. If there isn't a plan to return, we have to, we have to switch modes into how are we going to close this all down from, from, from far away? So I don't, I don't think it'll drag farther than into the first two weeks of May. I think by that time, the state has to decide whether or not we're coming back or not for good. Because a lot of districts, you know, get out that, that, that first week of June or so. So there's just not enough time to pull that all off. So I think we'll, I think we'll, there's like that three week window, that last week of April, those first two weeks of May. I think that's pretty much when we'll hear definitively how it's going to end.
Okay, thank you, thank you. I just hope that they allow adequate time for us to plan whatever we need to do and, you know, figure out the graduation and everything.
Yeah, again, I think they have a lot of incentives to send us back. And so they're going to hold off as long as they can to make that decision. But I do think they understand that their deadline is not much farther than what I was discussing.
Thank you. Any other questions? Alright, I don't see any. So at this time, I would entertain a motion to amend the calendar pursuant to the administration's. Recommendation to add two days to the former April vacation week and to end on Friday, June nineteenth? Is that correct? Nineteenth.
So moved?
Second.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to do a roll call vote as is required. I'm going to go in the order that you pop up on my screen. Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stores?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Larson? You got unmute your, you got unmute, I can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Withers, yes. Mrs., Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
So the motion passes. That's the only item on the agenda for tonight, since this is a special meeting. I generally would open it up to other topics, but since it's a special meeting posted for this specific purpose. Just to keep in line with the requirements, I want to keep it at that. I know Robbie said he had something to discuss, but perhaps we can do it at our next meeting, which I believe is next Monday, correct, Mr. Sawyer? Yeah.
So that works for you, Rob? Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Mr. Withers, yes. Mr. Geddes?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Stores?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Domenici?
Yes.
Ms. Porto?
Yes.
Ms. Sawyer?
Yes.
Alright, thank you guys very much. Everyone, take care, be well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.